Oh, it is nine o'clock and this meeting is called to order. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got our treasure hunter's pledge? Yes. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. Take this opportunity to welcome all of our principals and district staff with us. It's nice to have you all here today again, and we look forward to your joining us as we go forward. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you for items for discussion.
All right. Good morning, board members. I'm happy to see everybody on this beautiful Tuesday morning. Once again, we're discussing some issues that do have some impacts, well, many of them have impacts on our school centers. We have a few different presentations today. Lydia, did we have the slide queued up or what the presentations were or no? Okay. They're right here. They're locked in. The first is going to be, Mr. Smith is going to be going over our Tradition Triple D High School. We finalized our top three names, and then he's going to talk about the process at the next board meeting where that name, the board will select what that name is, and he's going to be kind of going through that process with the board members. And then we're going to pivot to the new site or the projected site for our K-8. Need to share with the board why that location was chosen rather than an alternative site, and I would like a consensus of the board. It's not a voting item per se, but consensus of the board to, because we are going to move forward on that. We do have a very tight construction timeline to get that school open by August of 2026. And then we're going to be jumping into our leasing agreements with regards to why do we lease rather than purchase vehicles? We wanted to just share with the public and the board as well why we've made that decision to lease our vehicles and really the savings that it gives the district. And then Dr. Wild has a couple of very important presentations. One is on Esser dollars. Our Esser dollars end at the end of this school year, and she's going to be sharing our plan to try to adequately fund our schools to make sure they have the resources that they need because many of the Esser positions are going away. She's going to be explaining that process. And then we finally finished up with our Neola initiative, and Dr. Wild is going to be sharing a couple of, you know, basically with Neola, nothing has really changed. It's really some of the minor language has changed so that we match what is in policy in Neola, but she's going to highlight a couple of things that we are proposing change based on discussions we've had with board members and at board workshops, and she'll be presenting that. But without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mr. Smith, who's going to take away and begin the presentation on the Triple D High School. Todd?
Good morning, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Prince. My name's Todd Smith, and I'm currently the proud principal of Tradition DDD High School. Today's process is round two, round two of our naming, and we're going to walk through the, how we came to submission of three names today, and here we go. First thing I want to show you is some new renditions. The renditions now have been updated to reflect the school colors for Tradition DD High School, Triple D. This right here is the entrance, walking in, just a visual from the staff parking lot. You see the school name, and hopefully in March 12th, we can superimpose a real school name on there where UC School. So you see the Columbia blue on the face of the building right there. Another angle, this is, you're looking at building 1C, I'm sorry, 1A, and that's one of the classroom buildings we have right there. Next photo is our Performing Arts Center. Will showcase our band, drama, dance, and even our academic achievements and athletic achievements in Performing Arts Center. Next picture is our gymnasium. Will bring back our district titles and be competitive in all sports and celebrations. And now for the reason we're here. Pursuant to district policy, Chapter 8, 8.54, we need to establish a naming committee. In our naming committee, we identified residents that currently live in the area of Tradition, business professionals that conduct business in the area of our school zone, community organizations, and students. We had two individuals that are currently, one's in seventh grade, one's in eighth grade that participated in our naming committee. We had a total of 15 residents and one at-large member. The at-large member was the proud principal of Tradition DDD. That would be me. In our executive summary here, what we had here is we started January 11th. January 11th was our first teams meeting. In that meeting, we had introductions of the committee members. We went through the school board policy, and then we had an open forum where individuals submitted names to the forefront and ran a master list of that. At the conclusion of that meeting, we had actually 37, or 38 names suggested that were submitted. We looked at that, we realized as the committee members that was too many names to vote on. So on January 25th, we had our second teams meeting. At our second teams meeting, the premise of the meeting was to eliminate some of the names that wouldn't make the voting and also some overlap. So in that meeting, conclusion of that meeting, we came down to 20 names. The next process was January 29th. The first teams meeting survey was open. At the team survey, what we did is we had the 20 names. Individuals would identify their top five names. So they submit the top five names. The surveys were open for a period of three days. The survey closed February 5th, and the finalists were identified. The finalists, in alphabetical order, were Crosstown High School, Legacy High School, and Sunset Ridge. The next step of the process is conduct another team survey that opened February 6th. The committee members ranked their top three names, first, second, third. So think of the Heisman Trophy voting. If you had first place, you had three points; second place, two points; third place, you got one point. On February 8, 2024, the results of the survey were released with Legacy High School documented number one by the survey results, followed by Sunset Ridge High School, then Crosstown High School. So therefore, this morning, I stand before you with the recommendations from our committee to present Legacy High School, Sunset Ridge High School, and Crosstown High Schools as suggestions being submitted to the school board for your official vote on March 12th and naming of the high school. Next steps, we have here, we looked at the word marks. Now, this is a word mark, this is something we've done, this is something the rookie principal tried to do this and get creative. I have no art degree, but you'll see our school colors in here. You see Legacy High School, and some of the slogans we looked at, "Let the legacy begin." Sunset Ridge High School, inspiring the leaders of tomorrow. Again, they're all encompassing our school colors. And Crosstown High School, achieving excellence together. Next step for the school board. The naming of the Tradition DDD will be a separate agenda item on March 12th. The school board members will be presented with a rank, a ranking sheet. You should have a copy of that ranking sheet right in front of you, and what we'll have you do then is the school board members will rank the suggested names during the school board meeting. So on that doc, you'll document your first, number one choice, second choice, and third choice. The school board members will return the ranking sheets to Dr. Prince during the board meeting. Then Dr. Prince turns into our accountant, and what he's going to do, he's going to tally the rankings during the meeting. Once Dr. Prince tallies the rankings, he'll share the official results with the school board chair. School board members will make a motion to vote on the name, and finally, the school board chair will formally announce the school's name. The next steps, on March 12th at 7:00 PM, the greatest show on earth will start. The official announcement will be made. We'll start working on our mascot and logo, our crest and word marks. I guarantee you will improve the three we shared today, and we'll open our spirit store so that everybody can wear their Columbia blue, navy, and their gray for subsequent school board workshop meetings. This is the process we utilized with the naming committee. The executive summary was presented, and then future tasks for the school board. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Mr. Smith, can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just wanted to, in summary, all of you have this half sheet, each of the board members. So between now and the board meeting, is it March 12th or the 13th?
12th.
The 12th. On March 12th, take this, you can mull it over, think about it. You know, we've got our three choices that are listed on there, Crosstown High, Legacy High, Sunset Ridge, and board members will bring their, your top three out of those three, which do you rank, one, two, three, and you'll bring that to the March 12th board meeting. It will be a separate board item discussion. Once we get to that point of the discussion, you'll pass these over to me. I'll tally them up, and basically, it's like golf, the lowest score wins, or the lowest score is the, is the, you know, whichever is the, when you're ranking them one, two, three, one is your top choice. Let's put it that way. And then I will hand that to the chair as the winner, so to speak, and then we'll make a motion to finalize the name of the school. So before we move any further, I want to thank Todd. Mr. Smith has really done a great job. It's very challenging to shepherd so many different diverse opinions and committee members because I saw the list of, I think, the first list of 50 or 30, was it 38 names?
38 names.
Oh, my God. I was like, how are we going to narrow that down? But he had a process and finally got it down to these top three, and I think they're actually two, three very, very good options for the board to consider. So wanted to take any questions? If you had any questions, I'd want to go ahead and take that now, but otherwise, it's a pretty simple, take this home and bring it back on the 12th. Chairperson Holly?
Sounds like a plan. It's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for all the work. And that's, that's a lot.
I'd like to thank the committee members that participated in there. They're all pillars of our community, and they're all friends of St. Lucy's Public Schools, and I've been interacting with them for the past 10 years. So I want to thank them. Thank you, Dr. Prince.
All right. Okay, so speaking of new schools, now, Mr. O'Leary, our chief operation, chief operations officer, is going to talk about, you know, why we landed on one specific spot for the new K-8, and, you know, we're going to be moving forward with this. We do have a tight timeline because once we, you know, finalize this, we can move forward, and then we've got to put it out to bid and all those fun things so that we can actually get this school built and opened in August of 2026. So, Mr. O'Leary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you. So, good morning, board chair, board members, Dr. Prince, and all our guests today. Today, I'll be presenting on the selection of the future K-8, the new school location. As you're aware, we'll be opening up the new K-8 in August of 2026. It will be a reuse plan. It will be just like our other K-8s that we have been building, so like Sam Gaines, Okamic, Palm Point. It's about 205,000 square feet, and it will be for capacity about 2,000 students. Seventeen, 10 of that will be at 90% of the capacity of the school. In addition to that, the school will have a gymnasium and a cafeteria, which means an auditorium and cafeteria, just like the other school sites that are available. So let's talk about my favorite topic that we've been talking about, taking bus tours on, and that's the growth within the Tradition area. It is also known as planning area number nine and planning area number 12. According to the United States Census Bureau, 2020, 2021, Port St. Lucie is the eighth largest city in Florida with over 205,000 residents. Currently, it sits the third largest city in South Florida. The planning areas, again, will be up here in nine and 12. Approved building for those, that area was about 33,500. That number is approximate because they have been adding more buildings to that area. Currently, there's about 30% built out with the remaining to build another 20,000 houses in that area alone. So this is the area, I pulled it out a little farther. So what we talk about in this area is the development of regional impact areas called DRIs. So that's development of regional impact. There's five areas out there. There's Tradition, Western Grove, Southern Grove, Riverland Kennedy, which is age restricted, and Wilson Grove, again, age restricted right now, and has, no building has begun there at this point. They're still going through the process. Today, currently, in those five DRIs, there are no St. Lucie Public Schools in that Tradition area, but you're well aware that next year, we'll be transitioning Palm Point in '24, '25 to St. Lucie Public Schools as a K-8. Right after that, you're well aware, we're building the Traditional Triple D named at the next board meeting, and then the new K-8 in opening August 2026. So I wanted to quickly just show you all of our current public schools and then all the future sites. Future sites are in yellow. I know it's hard to see, so I'm going to bring that up to you a little bit closer. But you can see all of our sites that we have acquired through the process of DRIs. You'll see many others that I don't have on this map, but I really wanted to focus on this DRIs, the five areas out in Tradition. So if you look at it, in addition to just the growth in the Tradition area, you have new growth coming right across the Glades Cut Off Road there. So you see Oak Ranch there, talking about 8,600 dwelling units. Dwelling units include single-family and multifamily types of housing. And then to the north of that, Wilder, which is another 4,000 dwelling units, and as you recall, that's where we took the bus tour through on that day. The young man, Austin, came onto our bus and explained it, but they're currently already selling and moving forth with their development plans as well. So just over there, you have over 10,000 homes being built just off of the Glades Cut Off area, which is great because that's where our Tradition High School is. So again, we talked about Palm Point coming online in '24, '25. Tradition High School, right in the location where a large portion of that growth is coming in August of '25. And then today, we're going to be talking about the K-8. We have two site locations. Our preferred site, obviously, is the Western Grove site up there at the top, right in line with Tradition High School, and right in the middle of neighborhoods that are currently being built, over 5,000 homes.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, sir.
The only reason I'm going to say pause there for just a minute is, I did mention this earlier at the principal meeting. Principals, if you'll notice, north of Glades Cut Off, we have multiple sites that are going to be future schools, and I did mention that, why these presentations are so important is because Mr. Smith is kind of shepherding the first new school we've had in quite a long time, but we will be having a pretty aggressive schedule with the way, if growth continues the way it is now, we will be having the next 10 years, multiple schools that we will be opening, that we, some of the people sitting in this room will be principals of those schools. So I just wanted to make sure I oriented them to those site locations.
Sure.
Because this is the slide I was referring to when we were talking earlier this morning. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary.
Yes, sir. So let's start with the Western Grove development. We really like this site for several reasons, and we'll get on to them as we go through the presentation here. This is the Western Grove. It has over 5,000 dwelling sites. It has 110 acres of park. That is right near the Tradition, Traditional Regional Park. That was the second stop on our tour when we went on the bus. It is on Tradition Parkway, which is right up here. This is coming out to Tradition Parkway, all the way out, past the VA, the new VA, all the way past Emory and Cadence and Seville are the housing units that they're building. Traditional Parkway is slated to run out here, and I might come up there because it might be better for you to see.
While Mr. O'Leary is going mobile, which I'm so excited about. He was all fired up about doing this, you know, make sure we've got the portable mic. But I also wanted to mention, too, is since we've taken that bus tour, I mean, that seems like it was yesterday, but if, I would encourage any of our board members to drive back out there, it looks completely different. Things that were just begun have now been finished, many, many single-family homes, and also that green area, that Tradition Regional Park, they have already cleared that land, and they've started working on that, and that is adjacent to where our school site will go. Keep going, Terrance, I'm sure.
Sure. So I just want to orient you to Tradition Park here. Also, this right here is the new Seville. That's already, has about 1,700 houses have already been established here. It's Seville, Cadence, Seville, and back over here is Emory. So that's well over 5,000 houses that are out there. Emory's already been completed. The Tradition Parkway, right here, will run all the way to Range Line. This is Range Line Road. That's around 2027 when this portion of the road will be built. Our location here is North-South A. This is planned to be developed as well. It will run all the way from Becker Road up North-South A, across, and right over here is our high school. So it will run across, run up, actually through Wilder, and then end up on Midway. So we are located right here, when you come out towards that area, where you took the bus, we went around in a circle, just on what some people are calling power line, but we're calling it North-South A. And right here, off of this road, is the frontage of the school. Notice behind the school is this large Traditional 110-acre park. They're building that out in phases, phase one, phase two. We work very well with the city, so our goal would be to share resources. So for the athletic facilities, extra PE areas, we'll be working with them on that. So bringing in a little tighter for you, anything in yellow here is going to be additional residential, single-family homes. Those have yet to start. You have the park in green. We have one commerce site right here, and then our school located here. It is 20 acres on the site with potential of moving the retention ponds along with the city. So here is, just moving the site in a little closer, Tradition. This would be North-South A. You can see how we have the building laid out. There is a park right behind us, so just a little bit closer, and then the additional housing market going in there. The access to the site is a deal. We are really working on our transportation, trying to make our footprint as small as possible. If you've been on those roads, Tradition, where it comes out and meets Village, it is one of the heaviest transportation sites in the city. So what we like to do is, by being in this area, we're right in the middle of the neighborhoods being built. Obviously, kids can walk to it. That is something that, on your direction, is how do we get to proximity schools? This would be a great example of what we're looking at. Also, with our feeder program, with the high school being right here, K-8, when they're selling their houses, you go to school here, and then your high school, soon to be named, will be right above it. That gives you a better look at where the high school location is compared to the K-8.
Now, we're going to talk about another location that we have right now that is in the Southern Grove development. It's towards the bottom, towards Becker Road. It's right on Village Green, and we'll show it to you right there. So most of the dwelling units in this area right now are age restricted. That's Riverland and Kennedy, as well as Wilson. They're all slated to be age-restricted homes, so not a lot of the kids would be living in those areas. There are, there is one small pocket of single-family homes called Kimberley, which is just under 200 homes right off of Tradition there, Discovery Way, I believe, from there. But it's nothing like the density that we have over in Western Grove of all the neighborhoods around it. In addition to that, if you look at some of the numbers, there are still large amounts of building going on there, but I wanted to draw your attention to the industrial at 8 million square feet of industrial as well as commercial. All that red is industrial and commercial lot. Matter of fact, you had an announcement earlier this month, the Costco, everybody thought we were getting a Costco, the Costco distribution center would be right across the site from our location of where that school is. So heavy, heavy industrial, commercial type of traffic, and we would be on a heavily-used road right now. Village Parkway is a heavily-used road, so it's a lot of traffic. We know what parent pickup areas look like. We would be just adding to that burden of traffic on that road right there. This gives you a great opportunity for lots of jobs within the corridor there. The EDC and the city are doing a phenomenal job. You know Chaney Brothers are down there, Amazon is in that location, FedEx. They're also bringing in the Costco distribution, but you can see all sorts of other businesses in that location. It's, you know, it's in a already congested roadway. The addition of our school would only add to the burden of it. The school site is a great, another potential education facility to help us support maybe other district initiatives and admin center, or potentially maybe another transportation compound out west where we would need to provide better service to our customers, but those are just examples. So why do we feel that Western Grove is the spot we would like to be in? And that Western Grove is centrally located in the non-age-restricted communities just south of our new high school. It works with the board's primary initiative, the develop of proximity zone planning, serving large growth area, over 5,000 homes in that Western Grove. Keep in mind, the additional growth off of Glades Cut Off can also be filtered to that, towards that new K-8. And then offerings, closer to students' address to create community and neighborhood schools, stronger K-12 feeder patterns, and then significant transportation savings in the sense that we're not running buses and trying to keep our transportation footprint to a minimal in an area where traffic, if you try to get out there, it is very difficult at this point. And then the city's Traditional Regional Park is planned right next to us at that school site, so it looks like the sharing of fields and park resources. So we really are excited about that opportunity. We also have a park next to Tradition Triple D, just like Centennial, so we work real well with the city's park and recs to where we can share facilities during the week to provide better practice opportunities for our students. And at this time, Dr. Prince?
So I want to just, you know, summarize things. So in this area, we had two sites, two sites to choose from. We had the Western Grove site, which, you know, that's where we've settled on, and the Southern Grove site. The Western Grove site, to just put it in a nutshell, it's close in proximity to the high school, it's right smack dab into all of these single-family homes, and it also doesn't back up, back up to a housing community, backs up to the park, the regional park, where we'd have many opportunities to share some of the resources there. I would also like to say that we have been in negotiations with the city as well constantly through this process. They're aware of this, it's not something new, and we feel like, in conjunction with the city, this is the site that makes sense. Also, with regards to transportation, we'll have multiple access points to the school, so not everything is coming off of Gatlin. There will be other ancillary roads that we can get through with regards to transportation. A lot of the kids will walk to school, and also, working with the EDC and our local businesses, you want to sell houses where kids are going to go to school. It's really a simple process. The Southern Grove site, although initially it looked like a good site, all of the housing communities around it are age-restricted, and then across the street, we have all that manufacturing and big box corridor where it just doesn't make sense for us. In fact, instead of alleviating our transportation footprint, we would actually be exacerbating it because more kids would have to be bused into that school instead of walking to that school. So that is kind of where we landed. It's not a voting item, per se. Chairperson Holly, it's more, you know, this is where we landed. We want the school board's blessing to move forward, and it's more of a consensus issue, but this is based on staff. This is where we want to move forward. So I turn it over to the chair for consideration of consensus with the board.
Board members, any comments on the presentation? Mr. Kelly?
I don't have a problem with what you're showing with this, we want to build the schools. I do have a problem, Mr. O'Leary, and I know you're well aware of this. I'm just here to remind you, the statistics you gave us at the beginning here, 205,000 people in the city of Port St. Lucie with 26,000 or whatever, homes to be built. That's erroneous, sir, and I think, and I know you know this, before Marty Sanders left, his figures were pretty much like mine with, John, you set up a meeting with me with the, over the high school, two years ago, with staff, over where we were going to put it. And even at that time, Marty knew in his figures about homes to be built, just lots that are already sanctioned to be built in the city. We're approaching 60,000 lots. We're approaching 60,000 lots. That's how many, not 20. We annexed, in 2003, we annexed, we called it all, the whole thing, Southern Grove. It was 28,000 homes that were to be built just there alone, where you're talking about putting the school right now. Altogether, there's about 60,000, and I think the county just approved another 8,200 up in the county in the north section. So those figures, you have to look at again, and I think maybe a part of it is because the city of Port St. Lucie, you're just talking about the city itself. The mayor and the council, they're advertising 240,000 to 245,000 people are in the city right now, and we're the fifth, we're going to be by the end of the year, Port St. Lucie is going to be the fifth-largest city in the state. So the figures that you have, I think, are old, are older figures. And part of it is because a lot of people don't realize, the city of Port St. Lucie, the unincorporated pieces like River Park and Vikings Landing, there's 20,000 to 25,000 people in those unincorporated areas, and we have to count that because that's the city. Just because the incorporated parts of the city may be 240,000, the city itself, where the areas that we're going to bus from and service, that's in a neighborhood of 260,000 people right now, sir. I know you know this.
Yes, that's coming from the old Census Bureau report.
You have to give the figures that you're given, but those are the figures that are floating out there right now, and it's going to get worse. I just wanted to get that on record.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other comments?
The Western Grove site that you're preferring to have the school built on, simply because that's the site where the children are and where the children will be, is something that I see as vital instead of what we previously had planned. And so I'm glad that the administration has really looked at that and have come up with another site that will be available for families. So out of the two sites, I would agree thoroughly with your presentation on why we need to change sites, and I wanted to make that comment from, comment from me.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Any other comments? Mr. Ingersoll?
I think the site's fine. I just know it's a little low, so as soon as we can start putting dirt on it from Triple D, I'd probably start doing that. I think it's going to be an Alapata situation where it's always low, and every time it rains, it's a little iffy.
Yes, ma'am, that's part of the planning process when we go through and we evaluate it, absolutely. So the concern is just the height. We'll have to come, you know, when we come through, our construction manager and building it out with the architects, how high we'll put that site, so there is no concerns around the lowness and flooding that Mr. Ingersoll is talking about. But we do that, any site we are building with that goes through that process, absolutely. And it's site prep, making sure you have enough dirt in to build it up.
Ms. Richardson?
My question would be, I wasn't understanding what Mr. Kelly was saying in terms of the information being old, so what would the update information look like? Are we saying that there are more homes in that area that, whatever the Grove is?
The Western Grove. Right, so I used the Census Bureau, trying and the data we had today, and Mr. Kelly is absolutely correct. You know, we expect that, you know, in 10 years, we're going to be at 60,000 kids here in St. Lucie because they're coming, you know, right now, we're projected at 60,000. Part of our study on the proximity, the study that we're doing, we'll be able to have that hardcore data right now. We checked all the births, we're putting in all the permits, all the inline lots that you're talking about, all the future growth. So currently, where we're looking, just last week with Dr. Wild, we were just looking at a 10-year projection of that hardcore data of what's going on in the city, and right now, that looks just under around 60,000 students, potential students. So eventually, you know, that's not counting any of the charter schools, which is, you know, close to 7,000, so you start adding that, we can start looking in the 60,000. So yes, we're projecting that out, but for this process, I wanted to go with the current data that we were talking about. But to Mr. Kelly's point, we expect large amounts of growth in that area.
And that area is which area, the projected area that you are looking at or the Becker Road area?
We, that, the information I just shared with you, Ms. Richardson, is county-wide what we're looking at, but to Mr. Kelly's point, the Glade's Cut Off, that, what he's talking about there, right, Mr. Kelly, was the Oak Ridge. Right now, they have 8,600 homes slated for that area, and then the 4,000 at Warner. So we're talking about both of those areas where there will be large growth and large housing, single-family, as well as multifamily type of housing in those areas.
Because when I drive by Becker Road, where it comes up to, I guess, Village Parkway?
Correct.
That, in that area, there is like a lot of, I want to call it a little like condos, townhouses, whatever, in that area. So what would be the mean housing cost in that area? What does that look like compared to?
Correct. So what you see on those multifamily or apartments in that area, those are age-restricted. When you're making that, those are age-restricted apartments. But, you know, we've seen the median housing right now, anywhere earlier, 350, but now it's 400,000, 450,000 for a single-family home, and they range all the way up to $800, $900,000 types of costs. So we generally see in that 400,000 range where we'll yield the most students, as opposed to like age-restricted or those 800 to 900,000-dollar houses where we may not yield as many children coming up. And that's all part of the work that we're doing on the proximity study that Dr. Wild and I are doing with our demographic, graphic team, Davis.
Okay, that's why I was asking, because, I mean, I understand that the lower the cost of the houses is the more affordable, the more kids are going to be in those homes. So that's why I'm asking about the mean for that area. So if that area is age-restricted, then you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? So they're asking for consensus on the Western Grove site to proceed with that, and we can do that with thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, looks like we have consensus, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. All right. So our next presentation is going to be with Mrs. Kim Allbritton, and we wanted to make sure that we shared with the public, there's two trains of thoughts with regards to buying versus, you know, leasing. And some people, you know, folks feel very strongly that, you know, we should be buying our fleet, you know, we're throwing money away, those kinds of things. And we wanted to make sure that we provided the board with a presentation as to why we've gone in this direction, because I think the board, and it will be evident to both the board and the public, that we are good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that we are efficient and we use our resources in a wise manner. So I asked Kim to put this together for us because we did do a study with regards to the costs associated with buying versus leasing, and I wanted just to make sure that we had a presentation for the public as well, and even our principals who are here today, as to why we make this decision. So, Mrs. Allbritton?
Thank you. Good morning, Board Chair Holly, Board Member Superintendent. I'm Kim Allbritton. I'm the Director of Financial Operations for the district. Today, I'm going to present on the fleet management program. So today, we're talking about why we do lease versus buy. For our topic today, we're, I'm going to show you our process that we used, what we used to have in our fleet program, what it is today, and then I'm going to show you some employee testimonials and some positive impacts that we've had on the district so far. So what did this, what did our fleet program look like in 2019? In 2019, we had approximately 169 vehicles. Those vehicles included cars, trucks, and box trucks. This does not include any of our buses. 70% of the vehicles were over 10 years old. When you're over 10 years old, that means your maintenance costs go up, your fuel cost goes up. It also decreases our time that our drivers have in the vehicles to accomplish the duties they need to get done for the day. From 2008 to 2019, we only purchased four vehicles per year on average with a fleet of 169 vehicles that would take approximately 42 years to replenish and cycle. Some of the other problems with our fleet were safety features. They were lacking key features like rear video cameras, anti-lock brakes, airbags, collision warnings, and other safety control features. The vehicle maintenance was difficult. It was funneling through one person for 169 drivers. This created large inefficiencies in our process. And then on top of that, our employees were spending hours coordinating their own service for their vehicles, and then often, they would end up doubling up with another employee so that they could get to the job that they needed to get done for the day and drive around. When new vehicles were purchased, they were mostly selected by the department that needed the vehicles. All of the factors were impacting our customer service to our schools, so we had to rethink this process. We were at a tipping point and needed to find a better solution. Then along came COVID, and as you all, as everyone may be aware, the vehicle industry was hit really hard during COVID. Part shortages, lack of inventory, and huge price increases. With those issues from COVID, everybody kind of ran into the same issues if you were a governmental agency. We had shortened ordering windows, meaning the vehicle manufacturers only gave us a certain amount of time to tell them what we wanted to order, and then when we did decide what we were going to order, we require our board approval, which all government agencies do, but often, they would give us two days to give them our order, or they would close the window. So as you can see, that was a problem. When we did get the orders in, they were canceled. We had two large orders that were canceled by the manufacturers. The increased demand by the, in vehicles by consumers and other corporations decreased the availability to the government agencies at state contract pricing. Some cases, we were offered substitutes, but often, we weren't offered anything at all for those orders. Locally, there's some other agencies using the same program. Indian River State College has actually been using the same program for 10-plus years, and they've had great success. Two other school districts I spoke to are using the same program, Hulk and DeSoto County School District. So why are our vehicles important to the district? I wanted to share with you some facts about our fleet. So half of our fleet provides maintenance, custodial, lawn service, pickups and deliveries to our schools every day. Some of the employees in those vehicles are lawn crews, HVAC, repair technicians, carpenters, electricians, and plumbers. Another 25% provide support services to our student transportation departments and our child nutrition program. 10% is our security fleet. 6% is our IT staff, and the remaining vehicles provide direct support to all of our schools. And all of the departments listed on this slide use their vehicle to perform their job and provide the customer service to our schools on a daily basis. So to recap, in 2009, I'm sorry, June 2019, the board approved this contract with Enterprise. Within the contract, we, I'm sorry, the contracts go through 2026, and within the contract is the equity lease program, the asset management software, maintenance program, and surplus vehicle sales.
Kim, I'm going to pause you there because you're, you are going a little slow down.
I know, I'm trying.
Go back, go back one. So first of all, when we entered into this agreement, I was not, I was not the superintendent. Mr. Jent was the superintendent, and I, and I do know that in our leadership meetings, it was, everything is under review. How can we be better? Because if you go back one slide, Kim, so when we talk about what our vehicles do, our vehicles are providing a service to our customers. Our customers are the schools. And if we're getting bottlenecks with regards to, we can't get vehicles serviced, we've got vehicles that can't be serviced, so they're on the side, we're having to double up and have two guys in a truck to go and service our schools, it was impacting the quality of service that we can provide our schools, which directly impacts our principals. And our principals are telling us, we can't get somebody out to fix something, we can't get this done. Then I know for a fact that Mr. Jent was like, we need to look at our business practices. You know, how can we resolve this issue? So when we went into this agreement, you know, part of my process is, are we getting the return on investment? Because this is a multi-year contract. Does this work for the district? And that's one of the reasons, another reason that I wanted to share this now, we're, we're four years in, are we getting our return on investment? Are we getting what was promised with regards to leasing versus buying? And that's another reason I asked Kim to do this today, because I wanted to update the board on our progress. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about that, but I just want to make sure that I am clear because what Kim is really sharing with you also is, from a customer service satisfaction, we do surveys with our principals, all of our departments, the quality of service that we provide, that has never been higher. Also, with our employee satisfaction, the people that are driving these vehicles, are they satisfied? Are we actually saving money? So as we go through this, slow it down a little bit, Ms. Allbritton, because I do want to take a little more leisurely pace because we're about to get to dollars and cents, and I want the board to see and the public to see the dollars that we do save doing this. Keep going.
Okay, so why are we using Enterprise still? We moved to the Enterprise platform, and it has benefited us in a few ways, so I'm going to go through that in these next few slides. Our employees are now easily, they can easily obtain the service that they need for their vehicles, which results in much less downtime and better customer service to our schools. When the employees are bringing in their vehicles for service, the shop has to submit their estimate to Enterprise to review. In the last year alone, Enterprise has reviewed 1,814 repair orders, resulting in $16,000 in negotiated savings to the district in just repair order review. Drivers also now enter their mileage directly into the Enterprise app or website, which removes the old paper-based forms we were using in the vehicles to track mileage. This saves time and increases efficiencies. The Enterprise Asset Management software provides us vehicle metrics that allows us to better manage our fleet. The newer vehicles are much more fuel-efficient, require less maintenance, and they reduce our overall operational costs. We were also able to save costs by right-sizing vehicles to the job, so this increased functionality and efficiency as well. We also use Enterprise to sell our surplus vehicles. By using their network to sell the vehicles, we're able to leverage a broader network to sell and increase our price per vehicle. Using a lease model, we also can replace vehicles on a quicker replacement cycle, and we capture all the operational and equity savings. Enterprise does use their nationwide network to secure our vehicles, giving us much better buying power and the ability to secure the vehicles we're looking for. When we do purchase the vehicles through Enterprise, their technical experts provide us valuable information on industry trends and what is working for that field. For example, what works best for an electrician, what's going to give them the easiest reach, part storage, things like that. We're able to fit the vehicle to that job and provide an efficient, cost-effective mobile workspace for our staff. So what we're going to do now is work into what our employees think. So many reasons that the district continues to use the Enterprise fleet program, but if we really want to know if it's working, we have to ask our staff and the people using it. So we reached out to our staff, and I'm going to share some of their employee testimonials we received about the Enterprise program. One of the benefits we see with this program is putting our staff and vehicles that works best for their role. Pictured on the left is what a prior HVAC van looked like. On the right is an Enterprise-recommended van for those same technicians. Joe Carr, he's one of our HVAC technicians, he said he loves the van, plenty of height, and the LED interior lights make it for a very functional workspace. As you can see, he can fully stand inside of the van, and I know it's kind of hard to see on this, the old picture, but they could not stand in those vans. Before implementing Enterprise, our vehicle transportation manager was coordinating service for our entire fleet, approximately almost 500 vehicles between our buses and our cars and trucks. Transitioning the vehicle maintenance allowed Enterprise to focus, allowed our transportation manager to focus solely on the bus fleet, and allowed Enterprise to focus solely on the car and truck fleet. So each area now receives faster, more efficient service. Our Director of Transportation, Jacunte Ephram, told us that he loves that the bus techs can focus solely on bus maintenance and repairs. They no longer are stopping to service work on vehicles now that Enterprise has taken Drivers now have access to over 79 local auto repair shops within a 20-mile radius. They bring their maintenance card to request the service, and then the service gets routed through Enterprise for approvals. Anything sent in over $1,000 is then sent to the district for review and approval. What we have found is empowering the driver What we have found is empowering the drivers to access service on their own has decreased their downtime and increased our ability to provide customer service to our schools. Stephen, Stephen Griffin is one of our law enforcement officers working in the security department. And his feedback was that he valued the Enterprise app and his ability to keep updated on mileage and maintenance. He relies on his vehicle for emergency calls and spends most of his day traveling in his vehicle, so it's extremely important that his car is properly maintained and working correctly. And Rob Diamato works on our maintenance team. He also praised the service, saying it's fast and easy. Some other employee feedback we've received is that the way our, the Enterprise has impacted our employees is seen here. Multiple departments all express the same praise for the program, that it allows them to be equipped with their daily, for their daily jobs. Routine maintenance is easily obtained. Vehicle acquisitions are smoother, using the national network at the state contract pricing. So once again, I'm going to share a few more testimonials from some of our, our staff. So pictured here on the top left is Dominic. He's one of our law enforcement officers in the security department. He also praised the Enterprise app and the ease at which he's able to obtain maintenance for his vehicle. Austin on the top right is an HVAC technician in our maintenance department, loves the style of the work van. Mitch, also in our transportation department, likes the bus mechanics, are now a hundred percent focused on student transportation. And then the bottom right image is Jose. He's in our maintenance department team, reiterating that the style of vans for his work is much better, and he can stand up and look for parts inside the vehicle. So what are the advantages to leasing? The district is, has, excuse me, the district is able to replace vehicles on a much quicker timeline. New vehicles decrease our overall total costs, including maintenance, fuel, and downtime. And then this program actually builds equity for our district, unlike traditional consumer lease programs. So here's the fun part, the financial highlights. By adding up all of our fuel efficiency savings, maintenance and repair costs, and staff time, we project an anticipated net gain to the district of over two million dollars over seven years using the Enterprise program. And then even if the program was break even, which it's not, we are saving money, it brings value to our employees and customers, and that is immeasurable for us. So I'm going to break down the dollars and cents just a little bit more. So looking at our numbers that drive the costs in our fleet, we are averaging thirteen miles per gallon on our fleet, while newer vehicles average twenty-five miles per gallon. Maintenance costs on older fleet cost about twenty-five cents per mile. Newer vehicles average twelve cents per mile on maintenance. So in a fleet of eighty vehicles, driven on average eighty-three hundred miles per year, the total savings in fuel and maintenance alone are a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. For staff time and just oil changes, we estimated we are saving over forty thousand dollars a year, and that's just oil changes. We are happy to meet with board members one-on-one if requested to take a deeper dive into the financials of this program. Thank you.
All right, Kim, don't go anywhere, in case you have any questions. You know, the Business Services did do a deep dive into the finances with regards to mileage, how much time we've saved. But I think the biggest, other than the financial piece, is the customer service part. And to be able to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our customers, and the customers are our school centers and our principals. So whenever we've looked since we've been doing this in two thousand nineteen, you know, we anticipate we've saved over a million dollars to the district. And the bottom line is we're getting a major return on investment going down this path. And if any of our board members ever wanted to meet with Kim and Michelle Thomas to, to get an advanced math lesson in, in the savings that were projected and how these numbers were, were created, we'd be happy to do that. But I'd like to take any questions or get any feedback before we move on to our next topic. Ms. Hawley?
Board members, any questions? Dr. Mills?
Feedback, I would say. You know, it's important to save the money and to be able to do things more efficiently. And the presentation, Ms. Kim, that you just gave, has shown us an area that we needed to improve. But also, and you mentioned customers, our customers are also, our principals, yes, but it's the people that actually are using the vehicles as well. And I was very impressed with the, with the, just the simple thing, which is not simple for some of our customers, our maintenance group, so forth, to be able to stand up in a vehicle rather than have to bend over and do the work. So I find it very feasible that we've made this change and very impressed with the savings that can happen. I think you said ten years, over ten years, over two million in savings, possibly?
Seven, seven years, two point two million.
Even, even less.
It'll still be over two million.
So that was money that was being wasted, and now we are being fiscal responsible in that area. I'm glad that someone saw the insight, but also that our employees are not going to lack or suffer because of the savings. And so to have the testimonies of the different people who are saying what it really is doing in their life to improve their, their work environment. So if it works for our employees, it works for me.
I'd also like to add, it was very subtle in the presentation, but in the past, our, our transportation department was doing a lot of the work on these vehicles as well, which was creating a glut, and our mechanics weren't able to focus on our buses. And once again, when you talk about the customers, Dr. Mills, we're talking about our students and making sure that our buses are on the road. I think that was really another issue, that it, it separated that out and made sure that the, the Enterprise fleet, it, once again, it was very subtle, but I think there were seventy-nine local businesses that are also benefiting because we're able to, the drivers were able to schedule those appointments and save money. And, and that also goes through Enterprise as well. So all the way around, I think it's a win for our local community, and it's a win for, for St. Lucie Public Schools.
Also with the lease, now we're leasing?
No, no, we're not leasing buses. I'm just saying that it's been taken off of Jacunte to dealing with that other fleet. He's now only worrying about our buses, which I think unloads a lot of responsibility from him to just focus on our bus fleet.
Mr. Kelly?
The presentation is very comprehensive, and for me, it's a no-brainer. You're going in the right direction. Leasing is the way to go. I just know that when you do order, when you do order the lease, you want to be in first before everybody else, because there's just so many vehicles to lease, and we got to be first, so get in quick. But it's the right way. You did a great job.
Ms. Richardson?
I guess I have a question. In the presentation, do we pay for the repairs?
Yes.
So you're leasing it, but we are paying for the repairs?
So there's two, there's two ways that it works. We pay for a maintenance program on all new vehicles. So there are some, they're not repairs, but it's maintenance that's included. Similar to if you did one on your own, you're offered that plan. They include so many oil changes, one set of tires, a set of brakes. I don't have it memorized, but it's things like that. Anything above and beyond that, yes, we're paying out of pocket. And then all the ones that are non-leased, yes, we pay for all that.
When you say over and above, what, what, what is over and above?
For maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so anything over what they include in their, in their maintenance plan that we're, we're paying for, which I don't have in front of me, and we could give that to you. But there's a set list of what is included at that rate.
Okay, so with the maintenance, we, anything over and above what we are contracted for, we are going to pay for it?
Correct.
Okay, now is there a limit on the amount of miles? Or is this like a commercial contract that's different from our school board contract that is specific to this district?
So yes, that's a good question. There is mileage listed in the lease. And then if they do happen to get to the, most of our vehicles won't, because they are not driven as much as you would see on a consumer lease. We have, we have a few options. We can buy a new one, we can continue it for twelve months, or we can buy it outright. But we don't really have, we're, we're at that moment right now, and I have one. So it's, it's worked out with the mileage we estimated, and Enterprise estimated the mileage, actually.
Okay, in your presentation, you, I thought we were talking about leasing, but you were, you mentioned something about selling the vehicles and purchasing the vehicles. What, do we buy vehicles from Enterprise? Are we buying vehicles? Or are we leasing, or do we buy and lease?
So it's, it's kind of the same topic, right? So we're, we're leasing a vehicle, which we consider a purchase, but it's not like we're buying it cash. Is that what you mean?
Lease to own.
Basically, yeah. It, it's a little bit different, but yeah, it's a lease-to-own type of program. And then to answer your question on the sales, when we, as a governmental agency, are, are done using an asset, we have to surplus them. So, and I'm sure you've seen those on the board agendas where we give you a list of assets that we're surplus. So we surplus them because they're over our threshold, and then we can resell them once you guys allow, you know, declare them surplus. We're using Enterprise to help resell those assets to achieve a higher per-unit cost than we were able to achieve on our own.
So I guess my understanding therefore then is that we are leasing them. Once they get to a certain, a, a certain place, then you go ahead and sell them and, 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 and release new cars and lease cars?
Correct. And by selling them sooner, we're actually able to recoup larger profits on them and put it back into the next vehicle.
Okay. Now, the, the one, the picture that you had with the HVAC person standing in it, that old vehicle was a vehicle that we, the district owned before we got into the leasing?
No, that was a very old vehicle. It's probably almost twenty years old.
That's what I'm saying, excuse me, but those, those, that's in the past when we owned the vehicles as opposed to now, the new ones, when you rent, lease the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one observation I'd like to make too, and it's hard to put a dollar figure on it. But when you're riding around town and you come up beside one of our vehicles now, they really look pristine. You know, just the appearance for the community to see that our vehicles are well-cared-for and, and kept up to date and all has to be good for the public to see as well. Like I said, it's hard to put a dollar figure on that, but I know there were times in the past where just myself, I'd see one of our vehicles on the road and think, oh, you know, not the greatest representation. But I don't, I don't have that anymore since this, and I hope that's really good. I noticed an average of eighty-three hundred miles. Is that really the average? That's?
So that's, yeah, we, we did a study when we first took over, or went, went into the Enterprise program, and they helped us analyze that based on our current fleet and our current mileage, because we do track mileage.
Right.
So we know what, what every vehicle has. So, you know, if you take a twenty-year-old van and, you know, take the current mileage and divide it out, you can come, kind of come up with some quick math. Now, it's not perfect, but that's basically what we did.
I kind of want to know how we're get, do that low, because just my around-town gets me eleven thousand a year. But, but that's phenomenal, and, and again, good use of our resources, so. Thank you, Ms. Albritton. That was a great presentation. Any other comments? Mr. Ingersoll?
Well, everyone knows that I don't lease. And it, it is just a hard pill for me to swallow. I look at a lease agreement as every five years, you're getting a newer vehicle. Yes, you're getting fuel efficiency because technology has changed. But the reality is, if you're driving only eighty-three hundred miles and you're getting twenty-five miles to a gallon or something, that's a lot of fuel efficiency over a period of vehicles. So for me to, to think the equity that you've lost in your vehicles towards getting newer vehicles every year just doesn't comprehend. And if it was so great, why wouldn't my business, I see Jaclyn's here, and why wouldn't other businesses take the same model?
Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna overs, well, this is, this is my, we're a one-point-three-billion-dollar industry. That's the school district. We're a very large organization, so in order to get the kind of savings we get, it's, it's all scale and the scale of our?
But you're only talking about a hundred and seventy vehicles. We were a one-point-billion-dollar industry.
Right now, we're at a hundred and fifty.
According to, to the thing, was only a hundred and seventy vehicles. You know, I'm a small business, and it's a greater burden on me to have my nine vehicles out there. As opposed to a one-point-eight-billion dollars, that's a small piece of the pie then.
But I would simply go back to, to scale and also employee efficiency.
And that's a great point that I was going to bring up. Employee efficiency is, instead of us doing it, why didn't we contract without other people, just like they do? Because all they did is shift the burden to a local vendor, which we could have possibly done too. You know, we talk about this app, but I can tell you where my vehicles are right now. I can tell you how much they drive. And I can even tell you when they're going to the gas stations. My guys go to the gas stations between five and eight o'clock on Mondays and Thursdays, because I only allow it. I only allow where they're allowed to go because I'm tracking that. Now granted, I've got eight vehicles, and I don't want to sit there and track it, but we're just counting on this app to do our business, and I understand that. But the reality of it is, is when my vehicle goes down, it costs me more than what you guys have to do, because I have to make up my business. Same thing with every other businessman in town. We can't afford to let our trucks go down. We can't afford to let them go down. That's why we have mechanics coming on the weekends and work on our vehicles. You know, I have a mobile mechanic that has to be there within ten, ten hours to have my vehicle working so that I'm back in business. I have two vehicles go down, I have to start working. My truck goes into play, and I don't want that. So I understand the customer value. I understand the point of getting new vehicles and the feel of a new vehicle. But the reality of it is, is we've had vehicles for fifteen years. Whereas that, that equity that we've been saving every five years to buy a new vehicle takes, comes out, comes out of a pot somewhere. We're giving a pot of education for children's money. You, you take that from somebody else. You're taking it from a capital project of a school getting built. Yes, we like to have new cars on the road. Yes, it looks great. Yes, it's great for our employees and it feels good. But somewhere, there comes at a cost.
Well, I think, I think what we demonstrated, Mr. Ingersoll, is based on what was and what is, that, that we're, we're doing significantly better than what we were doing. And I think from a, from a financial standpoint and a financial lens, there's a couple of things that I'd like to look at this from. And I, and I would respectfully, you're a small business owner, you know, and I, I, I understand, you know, you're putting, you're putting vehicles on the road. But if we're looking at our, what are our business practices and what is our core mission? You know, we're trying to make sure that, that we've got customers that are our families and parents. Our customers are our taxpayers. Our customers are our principals. And we've got to make sure that we are providing whatever service they need. And I think back in two thousand nineteen, when Mr. Jent, we initially did this study, we went down this road, what we were recognizing was we were not providing our customers with what they needed. And that was very evident. And I think Mr. Jent directed staff and, and business services and offer our operations. What do we need to do in order to provide better customer satisfaction? And this was the, this was the route that, that he made a decision to take, and it's a seven-year contract. My job as superintendent is to say, okay, in this seven-year contract, are we doing, are we getting a return on investment? Now, to your point, okay, maybe there is a way to do it better. But I can say, in year four of this contract, we've saved over a million dollars. I mean, that's, that's, that's my commitment, is to make sure we're getting what we initially signed up for. And whenever we come to the end of this agreement, we can reevaluate it and say, okay, is there a better way of doing this? Can we save more money? But I think that this was a great initial step to, to make things more efficient and provide our taxpayers with a, a better return on their investment.
See, I, I would a hundred percent agree with that, but in two thousand nineteen, we couldn't get vehicles. And the only way we could get vehicles was through leasing them. And that was the buying power of that, because in the slide, it even said Enterprise was able to get a greater buying power than, than one individual, because we are a small business. Because when, in, in the scheme of things, Enterprise as a conglomerate is a larger business, so we turned to them and had a bigger buying power at a time when no one else could buy vehicles. So I a hundred percent agree, and that's why I voted on it then. But ever since then, I've, I've been true to what I've, what I believe in. My core value is, we are giving back to the customer, and our customer are our taxpayers, and we're, and the children. So there is a larger pot, and I think that it could be spent in a different direction. Not taken away from the customer service of our employees, but just doing it better, because now we realize- Because now we realize that we don't have to spend everything in-house. We don't have to have our bus technicians doing it. I mean, because everyone needs to give their car to an oil change, everybody here has to go get an oil change. Now they're synthetic oil. What do we do? 10,000 miles. So now that's one time out of the year. As opposed to when we were doing it every three months, when we were going every 3,000 miles or 2,000 miles. Is that not true? Is not time change and we're not doing, taking oil changes at a different perspective? Now we went from a $20 oil change to an $89 oil change. It only makes sense.
Am I missing something yet? I mean, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that we're not saving money from Mr. Ingersoll. So I'm wondering, how am I missing something when I'm being told that we're gonna save over $2 million in seven years? Can you, can you again explain to us? How we're going about the savings? How we get, how did we get to saving $2 million in seven years? And then, um, for some reason, it's like I'm hearing Mr. Ingersoll saying that we're, we're spending money and other people are lacking money. I just want to get it again.
We, we are saving over $2 million. If any board member wants to go and do, and go through the math with Mrs. Albritton, we're, we're available. I think there's just a philosophical difference with Mr. Ingersoll. He's got a philosophy that we should buy and own our own vehicles versus, versus leasing. So we just, we just agree to disagree. We, we know we're saving over $2 million over seven years.
Bottom line for me.
Mr. Keller?
If, if I had a small business like Troy and I had guys that were maintenance guys and were out, absolutely I wouldn't, lease I would buy. But, uh, you know, I'm 100 years old. I've been through corporations, large corporations with this leasing versus buying. And Dr. Mills, believe me, and you had a large 170 vehicles, over 100. There's no, it's a no-brainer, like I'm telling you. Been through it so many times. I remember with the city, 15, 20 years ago, somebody came and said, look, we're not gonna buy anymore or lease. What we're gonna do is we're gonna buy and every 10 years, we're gonna take the cop cars and we're gonna put new engines in them and new transmissions and revitalize them and put them back on the road. Oh, that sounds great. It was the worst disaster you could ever imagine three years later. It was a, you know what it is, Dr. Mills? It's the time. We're in the teaching business. We're in taking care of kids. We don't have time to be in, in, in maintenance on cars and vehicles. When you have that amount of cars, that, those amount of vehicles, it's absolutely better to lease. And I believe that we saved $2 million. I know we do. I've been through it and small business, absolutely I would buy my vehicles and maintain them. But I don't have, uh, maintenance people driving around with these vehicles.
You brought up a great point and I'm glad you did that. Because when you talked about police cars, there's a difference between police cars and school security here. And, and we've talked about this, I've talked about this with the superintendent. A police car, they don't ever turn that dang gum thing off all day. They sit for 12 hours and that police car runs all day. And I can see the.
That was just a part of it. I'm talking about all our maintenance, all our vehicles.
When I brought this up earlier, people are like, oh, law enforcement leases it. And I went and talked to Fort Pierce PDA and I went and talked to the sheriff's office and they do. And they said, oh, it's a great program because our cars take so much of a beating. We don't ever turn our air conditions off. We don't ever do this other stuff. So for us to get a, a new vehicle every three or four years is great. Because the reality of it is, is it is a cost savings. But when the, but I'm not saying let's replace engines. I'm not saying that. But when a time comes, when you start looking at your own vehicle and you say, hey, I'm putting more into this than it's worth, it's time to sell a vehicle. But I mean, right now, we're, we're flapping out vehicles every five, seven years. And I just think that's an expensive burden.
Don't listen to him. $2 million savings. Don't listen. If I want to get my pool fixed, I'm calling you, but I'm gonna lease my vehicles.
Is the contract for 10 years with Enterprise?
Till 2026.
Oh.
Seven years.
It's only a few more years.
Oh.
We started in 2019.
Oh. Okay. Right, so I guess there is nothing to do until the seven years. Just wait it out and see what happens? How much more money we're gonna save? So in seven years, we are saving $2 million. How much money have we saved in the last four years or however many years?
So we're estimating what Dr. Prince mentioned, but a lot of the money is hard to estimate with downtime, employee lost time. And that's our biggest piece of the, of the puzzle is, as Mrs. Holly mentioned, you know, seeing the vehicles drive around, I mean, it, they're, they're very old. They break down a lot. So we're spending a lot on maintenance costs and just having them be able to show up to the job sites and do their work on a daily basis has been huge for us.
Okay, so it's not physical money? It's more, um?
It's both. But we're having, I'm having to estimate some of that time.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we're saying $2 million over seven years.
Okay, so when, because my interpretation, when you said $2 million, I figured it was $2 million out of the kitty. But it's not. It's, it's, it's $2 million based on the aesthetics of the car, the downtime, all of those things you put together to get to this $2 million.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reality of it is, is we also just leased more vehicles like two months ago, three months ago?
Yes, we leased five vehicles.
Five vehicles.
Something like that. We leased for the, for the police department, we, or in security. So we did lease more cars as well. Okay, I think that this is something that really that when it comes up for vote, you know, that, you know, we should look at it deeper and with more knowledge. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, we're ready to move to the next one.
All right. So next is a, is a, is a really, the biggest topic in my opinion of the day is the ESER transition. You know, during COVID, we received relief dollars from the government and that was really to address learning loss and those dollars are going away. And with that being said, Dr. Wild is going to be presenting to the board on our, how we plan to sunset ESER resources and, you know, what is gonna happen in our schools in these positions and what we're recommending moving forward is to try to soften the blow with some of our schools with regards to losing those dollars. Dr. Wild?
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Prince. Happy to be here once again. I always have the most exciting, riveting topics of the day. And this morning, the first topic I'm gonna be discussing is that ESER transition. And I want to give a little bit of history and remind everybody where we started and what we've come through in these years since we first received American Rescue Dollars, ESER funds in 2020. That was the first year. So I want to explain what happened over that time and what it's gonna look like when these funds run out at the end of this year. Prior to COVID, schools purchased most of the types of items and staffing positions through their Title I dollars. And a portion of their dollars were set aside district-wide for supplemental curriculum so that we would have standardized curriculum, supplemental curriculum. This is different than our core. So for example, everybody is familiar with I Ready in elementary school. That was funded through a portion of their Title I dollars. Principals also used their remaining Title I dollars to supplement their general staffing allocations that every school receives, which is a, a standard allocation formula, and to add any supplemental curriculum that they determined their school needed through the school improvement process. When they look at their data and their student needs, what is it that they need at their school? And where? What grade level? What subject? And that is indeed the purpose of the Title I funding. That is what that funding is for. So when this infusion of money came to school districts, we were able to address the increased needs based on the impact of COVID with this additional money. And so we have been very clear in communicating throughout this entire time since 2020 that these dollars were temporary and we would one day go back to our previous practices. So we want to review that for everyone and make sure that everyone is aware of what that looks like. This year, as we get ready for that eventuality for next school year, we are gonna be providing our principals with their staffing allocations very shortly, their, their tentative staffing allocations and their Title I budgets, their tentative Title I budgets, we will be giving to them earlier so that they can begin planning for the changes that they will see at their school sites. The two main areas that will impact the schools that we need to discuss are staffing and curriculum. So for staffing, we did fund many, many school-based positions. The purpose of those positions, as you recall, and I'll go through them in just a second, were to address the increased academic needs of our students because of that interruption that they had to instruction or even mental health needs. We are going to make sure that those employees that have joined us with those funding sources have an opportunity to move into other open positions through attrition or through Title I. For curriculum, we did fund a lot of additional curriculum materials and we also funded some of our previous materials through ESER dollars. So we, we maintained some and we added new programs during that time. So let's first talk about staffing. Each school was allocated two teachers aides, schools that have elementary grades, two interventionists, K through eight, and in high school, an interventionist and one coach. Now, they may still have additional positions out of their Title I, but these were the ESER-funded ones. And then in addition, we did add 34 ESE teachers across the district to meet various needs. And those were not standardized at different schools. They were based on the ESE units at each of the schools. We are going in, yes, sir? Yes.
The teacher's aide, are those teachers or those paras?
Good question. They are para-professionals.
Interventionists?
Those are, interventionists are teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Good question. Yes, I'm glad you asked those questions. The teachers aides, they had various roles within the school, but the main function of a teacher's aide in, through the ESER dollars was to provide another adult to help with small group instruction because more kids than ever needed some individual attention because of COVID. The interventionists, their role is as a certified teacher to go in and provide evidence-based or research-based interventions to students in reading and math, to document the impact of those interventions and communicate that with the parents. That is a role that the classroom teacher generally holds, but we needed more of that. And I'm gonna get back to the interventionist right now. We are recommending that we do pick up the cost of one interventionist for every elementary and K-8 school out of general funds for next year. And the reason for that is that we, we know that that position has been very instrumental in supporting the teachers and the counselors in providing those interventions and that there are still students in need of those interventions. But, but another variable to, to recognize is that since 2020, the actual requirements around interventions have increased through legislation, first in reading and then in math. So the requirements for communicating with parents about those interventions really has increased the workload on everybody. So our recommendation, we're trying to be very strategic here because we are talking about general dollars. So our recommendation is to add one interventionist at the elementary K-8 level to our staffing allocation. That doesn't preclude a principal from adding more with their Title I dollars, but we wanted to ensure that everyone has at least one interventionist. Our requirement is going to be that the person be reading endorsed because that is a requirement to providing reading interventions. And the requirements around reading intervention are higher, the state requirements. However, we want to provide this, the school principals with the flexibility to also allow that interventionist to provide math intervention. These are elementary teachers. They're certified in both. And that way, a school that has a higher math need over a reading need can develop that individual's schedule accordingly. Therefore, the other interventionist at each school and the interventionist and coach at the secondary level, as well as the teacher's aides, would be maintained only if they are maintained at the school site using the Title I funds or through other grants as they become available. And that is not unexpected. In fact, the expectation was that they would lose all of them and our recommendation is to maintain that single interventionist. In addition, the 34 ESE teachers, those will be phased out and put into, absorbed into open positions through attrition, except for six that we have already determined are needed with our ESE staffing allocation. And that will continue to be evaluated. With ESE staffing, as new students come into the district, and we see that every day, based on their IEP needs, the schedule is created for them. And then, so we constantly have to reevaluate ESE staffing. In the area of curriculum and instruction, there's two areas. All of this is supplementary curriculum. This is not our core instruction, instructional materials that come from our instructional materials funds or our textbook dollars. This is actually supplementary and we always had I Ready. We did add My Path and Success Maker in middle grades and I X L for high school grades. And we did this all through ESER dollars. So we will be moving back to reserving a portion of their Title I dollars to fund these. However, right now, we are currently negotiating with the vendors on what the costs will be and trying to reduce those costs. Because with, with having to be more strategic with our dollars, we may not buy every single component of every single program. So we are in negotiations. And then the additional supplementary materials were for a range of topics, Top Score, Math Daily Reviews, Reading, Science, Typing Club, Near Pod and Microsoft Teams enhancements. Those will also return to an approved curriculum menu. And this was the procedure that our principals, who were in their seats prior to 2020, are very familiar with. Approved curriculum that they can select utilizing their school improvement planning process. And we're gonna have ongoing conversations with the principals about this and support them through these changes. And this is very, very exciting. As you know, we have been putting a very big focus on grades K through two. Those foundational skills are critical to our students' future success in all subjects. And currently, our phonics program is embedded within their reading program. And then we have Tier Two and Tier Three programs. If you recall from earlier presentations, that is when a student needs a little bit more and they're pulled into small groups and they get more. Well, we started using what's called Ufly Foundations, which is from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. This is a research center. I'm sure you've heard about it at the University of Florida. And they have done some amazing work and developed this program that is direct, explicit and systematic, which is required in the law. And it is grounded in the science of reading. And we have introduced this as a Tier Three intervention, which means just for a few students, the students that really had identified needs. However, we are working with the University of Florida now through a private donation and we are going to be able to provide the core K through two phonics, Ufly Foundations program next year to all of our K through two classrooms. And we're just thrilled about this. This is not something that the principals were aware of. But we are thrilled about this because the feedback from the teachers that have been trained on it has been so positive.
Dr. Wild, do we know what the financial value of the private donation is?
For the initial purchase, it's about 1.3 million. But they are committed to continue to support the ongoing replacement and training as well. So it will ultimately be more than that, but that is the original. And once we finalize all of the details around that, we will come back to the board and share this good news and, and publicize. this good news and publicize this, but this is just like an early teaser to this upcoming really, really good news.
Yeah, I just wanted to pause. That is a huge financial windfall for the St. Lucie Public Schools through a private benefactor to pay for this. This is an outstanding program, and it really addresses the phonetic needs of our struggling students in K-2. So we're really excited about this, and I just wanted to really emphasize how important that was. So thanks, Dr. Wild.
And I'm sorry, one last thing that I wanted to add that I didn't mention earlier is that the other major use of the Esser dollars has been in our very robust expanded summer school. And that this will be the last summer where we have the Esser dollars to maintain our K through 12 summer initiative. So previously, we only had third grade and seniors, ESE Extended Summer School, and ESOL and migrant summer school. So we will have to also, at a future date sometime next year, determine what our future summer schools are going to look like. So that's not for today's conversation, but something to be aware of because that will also impact general fund moving forward. And I know there was a question, but I wasn't sure who it was.
The UFLY program, just clarification on that Tier 3 group.
Helen, oh, sorry, sorry, Dr. Mills.
Wanted to know if they would be taken out of the classroom, right? Like they are taken out now, but you're using a special program that you really are endorsing as being something that can help them over and above what they, the help that they have been getting?
Yeah, so we will be transitioning, right now, we've only, we're only using UFLY at a very limited basis in Tier 3, which is either through somebody pushing into the classroom, doing it in a small group, or pulling students out. We will be transitioning UFLY for all students. It will be the core phonics curriculum. It'll be built into their daily reading block for all students because it is, it is really very, very evidence-based, meets all of the requirements of the law, and it's grounded in that science of reading that all of our teachers have been recently very well-trained in.
So you're saying all students will get the UFLY?
Yes.
In class as a phonics subject for phonics?
That's right, in grades K-1 and 2.
So the Tier 3 students, they're also getting the UFLY, but on a more intense level?
They'd be getting it every day as their full core curriculum. That's correct.
Okay.
So what is it replacing? Is it replacing anything that?
Yes, it is. It is replacing the phonics lessons that are currently in Benchmark. And it is more, it is more robust. We will, we will adjust the teaching time because phonics is so key. That we will still be using Benchmark, just not that phonics component.
I see. Okay.
Dr. Wild, how many, how many positions, how many interventionists are we talking about? How many positions?
Right now, we are talking, let's see, where is Rod Nada?
About.
We are maintaining about 27 of them, if I recall.
Okay.
So there's double that right now.
Okay, and the other, and the big question I have for you that I'm concerned about is I saw, I briefly saw the word vendors. Are these going to be full-time positions with St. Lucie County that are going to work for us, or are there some of these going to be outside people that we're going to hire?
Yes, they are, they are our full-time employees. The vendors was referring to the curriculum where we are working on the pricing of, and the contracts going forward for things like iReady.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear.
I know you said this, but I think I was spacing out a little bit. Title I schools got interventionists, and then we're, the whole district's going up for 2.2 million, are going to fund another interventionist, so they'll get two?
Currently, the interventionists that I was referring to are funded through Esser.
Yes.
Moving forward, our recommendation is that every elementary and K-8 receive a staffing allocation of a general-funded interventionist, and then if they have the need and the additional Title I dollars, they can add to that.
Okay.
And we are very fortunate that all of our schools are Title I, so they do have that additional funding.
I just have a question with reference to the summer school. Before the Esser dollars, we had summer schools, correct?
We did, but it was very, very different than we have had for the last four years. It was, we had third grade reading camp, we had credit recovery primarily for high school seniors, we had exceptional student education extended school year for ESE students, and we had students for, summer school for our students of other languages, ESOL and migrant students. We also had a summer camp for those students. And then occasionally, there were grants that funded K-1 and 2 camps and specialty summer schools, but we have not had the full K through 12 summer school that we've had in the last four years.
Okay, because the concern was, what are we going to do after the Esser dollars? So I'm just saying, well, we had it before, so maybe look, you know, are we going to go back to what we were doing before and then just step it up a little bit?
So we will most certainly have what we had before, but we will have to do a budget analysis and also a need analysis next school year to make that determination for the following summer.
Okay.
I think the largest difference, too, is that we had a summer school almost at every school and, which obviously was a huge cost, as opposed to going to Zelen schools and also transportation was limited before in the past.
That's, that's correct. Every school, every grade, and a lot of challenges come with that, along with a lot of benefits. Any other questions related to Esser? And that is just the summary slide, just restating that really no surprises here. We knew this was temporary funding. We knew we would have to go back to pre-pandemic practices and that we're going to continue to support our schools through these changes. And as always, our grants department will continue to seek additional supplementary funds. So if there's no other questions, our next topic is NEOLA.
Don't go anywhere, Dr. Wild, because you're doing NEOLA.
Moving on to NEOLA, and I'm going to do a brief review once more for any audience members who haven't tuned in to our more recent meetings. Okay, just once again, NEOLA is a company that we have contracted with that is used by 34 Florida school districts as well as Indian River State College, and it's used nationally, in fact, to provide a more standardized school board policy system so that the numbering system is the same across the whole state. But really, most importantly, they monitor legislation and school board rule to make sure that districts stay on pace and have policies that are current and in compliance with all statutes and rules. We, we had a presentation in 2022, and we did sign a two-year contract, and we had our initial staff training back in June of '22 with 20 district staff members. And over these last two years, the NEOLA folks have visited us on all the dates that you see up on the screen, and we have had marathon sessions of reviewing every existing policy, every NEOLA policy, and making sure that all of our policies are up to date. And then we did a board workshop just in last month, January of 2024. We put out our new NEOLA draft policies for public notice, and the expectation is that on March 12th, we will have a public hearing and a projected adoption. And I just want to reiterate once again that going through this transition to NEOLA, our intent is not to change the meat, the content of our policies, or, you know, sneak in any changes, because we have a, we have a procedure for that. We have a policy review procedure, we have a committee that meets, Mrs. Holly represents the board on that committee. So if our intent is to actually change practice, we go through that process, and then we bring each policy change to you for adoption. So this transition is affecting all policies. Every policy was reviewed by the department that it affects. So many of the policies are specific to certain departments, so those individuals reviewed the policy, we worked with our legal department on it, and we made changes if they were required in statute and didn't change our practice. And then anything else will be brought forward in the future. So some of their, some of their policies were significantly different, and so we are holding those until after we get through this process, and if we're going to bring them, we'll bring them through our regular process. I know that you're aware that you have access to all of the draft policies now in board docs. They are labeled as draft policies for you to look at as well as the general public, anybody that is interested. I know that I have spoken to our union leadership, they have, they are looking through the policies as well because they actually sit on our policy review committee. So any changes, they, they are part of that discussion. Yeah.
Tell general public what NEOLA is once again? I'm sorry, but they, people watching at home have no idea what we're talking about.
NEOLA, it used to be an acronym, but it is not anymore. It is now the name of the company that, that contracts out with school districts. They are staffed by attorneys and former school leaders to help school districts with policies, but it used to stand for the Northeast Ohio, I'm going to fail the test this time, I forgot. Barbara Sadica, do you? Learning Alliance. Northeast Ohio Learning Alliance? Okay. I needed to phone a friend.
The N is only capitalized, so it's no longer an acronym. I saw that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And speaking of Mr. Kelly, he actually did come and meet with me to go through the policies and make sure that he was aware of how to access. If anybody would like to come and go through the policies at all, that invitation is still out there. But there are, as you can see from the bottom bullet, there are two policies that we do want to have some discussion about today before we get to the March meeting. And it is because the first one is about public participation at board meetings. It's one of the bylaws, 0169.1, and we did discuss it a year ago, actually, January 2023, and it was about public participation at meetings, speakers at meetings. And so our recommendation now, as part of this, is that all speakers will have three minutes each at board meetings, and you can read the entire policy in board docs, we're just pulling out the part that is relevant to today's discussion. And when the number of unscheduled speakers exceeds certain thresholds, that that timeframe go down. And that is a very rare occurrence. That has happened very few times in all of the years that I've been here. But when it does, the speakers tend to get redundant and repeat each other, and the night can go on very long without added content. So this procedure that some other districts have adopted does save time and make sure that every speaker stays on point with new information. So that is one change.
Well, I just wanted to say, too, you know, we, from January of 2023, staff did go back and re-watch that board workshop to try to capture what was discussed, and I think in essence, you know, where we landed with it is that it actually encourages more public participation, not, not less, because if you've got 30 folks there that want to speak or more, I'm going to wait an hour and a half before I get my turn. And, you know, you've got people that just walk away or quit because they don't want to wait that long. This actually allows the, if people want to come and speak to, to specific items or they want to talk, you know, there could be 50, 60 people, and instead of having to wait for three, four hours, you might wait for an hour and 10 minutes to get, to have an opportunity to speak to a topic. So that's kind of where we landed with it, but the previous slide was really, go back one more? The second bullet. So nothing really has changed out of all these policies. We made my senior leadership team cabinet, each person was responsible to review their policies, so there were no significant changes. The only significant changes that will be coming to the board in two weeks are, two slides up, Helen, is the speaker times. That is one specific change, and I believe there's one other that we were going to discuss today.
Yes.
But this will be my recommendation as a policy change to the board on March 12th.
And a little bit more on the public participation. Also, we have looked at adding this language as well in posting signage, and this is becoming a more common policy due to safety and disruptive board meetings. So the recommendation here is for safety and security reasons and to ensure that visibility is not disrupted for school police officers and/or visitors attending the meeting. Visitors are not permitted to bring flags, signage, placards, posters, banners, bundles, and/or other objects that could be disruptive or used as weapons at board meetings, including flags, signs, or placards mounted on sticks or poles. With that, we would post signage if this is the policy that the board approves. We would post signage so that this would not be a surprise to any visitors. And if you look at the bottom, there are exceptions to it with superintendent approval when someone has a visual that they need to share and they make us aware ahead of time and it is approved. And this is the last suggestion for the public participation policy before I'll pause for discussion. In meeting with Mr. Kelly, he did take a look at this one segment here that talks about that only the presiding officer, that is the chairperson for most meetings. It would be the chair that is presiding over the meeting, using Robert's Rules of Orders. Only the chair may address members of the audience or speakers. That has always been our practice. That is our longstanding practice. It just provides order and continuity. But Mr. Kelly asked if we could add something a little bit more explicit to make sure that it's clear for either future board members and for audience members, and also because he's seen it more explicitly addressed on other boards that he has served. So it's in bold, it's currently not what is in the policy. This is a suggestion that came about from my meeting, and that is nor shall any board member address or question speakers or audience members unless recognized by the presiding officer, which is the chair, unless the chair is absent.
And I'd also like to add, when Mr. Kelly approached us about this, I felt, after looking at other policies for other districts, that we wanted to be a little bit more explicit with it. So I, I did agree with Mr. Kelly that I would bring this to the board for, for some thoughts, and it would be my recommendation, but I, that's why, because it is an added sentence, I wanted to make sure that we brought it to the board so that I would point that out, because once again, any, you know, everything else, other than what we're presenting to you today, is literally a one or two words may change, but the intent is exactly the same.
Correct.
This is pretty much how we run our board meetings anyway. It's our practice, but I just wanted to memorialize it in policy as well.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. Mrs. Holly, do you want me to cover the next one before you open it up for discussion?
I think it might be a good idea to discuss this part since the next area is a little, a little different.
Okay.
Board members, are there any observations, questions about the, the three proposed changes, which really aren't necessarily changes, they've been our practice, other than the signage, which is new, and most districts in the nation have adopted that policy now, just for safety concerns?
And if you recall, we have made some adjustments to safety with people approaching the dais. You know, we have, you know, it's subtle, but the, there's a security person at the front now. You know, the, the bottom line is, you know, the board members, your safety is important to me, and we want to make sure that we're very classy with how we handle things, but also with having discussions with other superintendents. The signage can be problematic because you can't see what people are doing behind the signs, and we need to make sure we don't have obstructed views when I've got security personnel, especially. especially if we have a raucous board meeting, you know, where, where safety may be a concern. So, you know, if you go to other board meetings or see other board meetings, signage is not allowed. So once again, we want to make sure moving forward that that's our practice.
Correct. Any comments before we move to the next section? Dr. Mills?
Observation here with the additional board member suggestion. The word is suggestion. And we want to make sure that it's, we have an understanding. It's not something that's going to be adopted in policy. But it is a strong suggestion that we maintain this, which is really a Robert's Rule of Order, really, what you're saying here.
I think the word suggestion is used here because it came forth as a suggestion. But as Dr. Pr, Dr. Prince said, he'll be bringing it as a recommendation that we adopt this as our policy.
Yeah, yes, Dr. Mills. This, this would be my proposed language. That's why I wanted to highlight it and bring it to the board. Because it is, it is a more explicit language, but it's what we already do anyway. But it's my recommendation to make it more explicit.
And it's been our, our practice and procedure.
And I think you are correct too, that it, it is a rule. It's just the general public doesn't necessarily know it. And this would help explain it to, to people that are attending the board meeting of why every board member isn't interacting with them.
Okay, let's move on to the next part. Oh, oh, Mrs. Richardson?
Yes. So with reference to the public participation at board meetings, I believe, I disagree with the redundancy of what the, or constituents has to say. I think that three minutes, if we have 21 speakers, if we have 50 speakers, that they should be allowed the three minutes if they sign up on time and do their due diligence because they have a right to speak, even if it's redundant. We, our job, we are sitting there, we, our job is to listen and hear what's on their heart, even if they are saying the same thing. Maybe if they keep saying the same thing, it'll get across that this is what the community is asking for. I don't know. But I do believe three minutes and cutting it down to a minute, to a minute. I think it's taken away from their right to speak. And they do have that right. If everybody gets three minutes, then everybody should get three minutes and not one minute because we have 21 or more speakers. In Miami, they have lines and they, their, their, their board meeting goes on for hours. And I'm sure there's no new information. I'm sure they are saying the very same things. But if it's on your heart and you want the board to know, you want somebody to know, then you should have that right to speak what is on your heart and not have to condense it because you're speaker number 21 or whatever it is. I think you're, if I'm reading this correct, if we have 21 or more speakers, then each speaker gets one minute. Is that correct?
No, what the 21st, or the, the 21st speaker would have a minute.
Would have, exactly.
Right.
All right. So therefore then if I'm the 21st speaker, because that's how I signed up in line, then I'm only going to get one minute. If.
I'm reading that totally different. I'm seeing if we have 21 speakers, everyone gets a minute. Not your 21 speakers and then the 21 gets one minute.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. You're, no, you're correct. I'm sorry. Misinformation. My, my bad, Mrs. Richardson. I, I didn't process that. Yes. Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Ingersoll. I just totally, I whiffed on that one.
So if I'm, if we have 21 or more speakers, we have one minute. And I just believe that one minute is not enough to say exactly what you want to say and get your point across. Unless, you know, we do a, a thing where we say, well, I'm going to take this first minute and this is my paragraph. This is your paragraph, so that we get to get the whole gist of what's being said. So I am not, I am not in agreement with this statement, with this being added this way. I think we should leave it at the three minutes. Even at that, I think we have five minutes now, if I'm not mistaken, and after, if you, if you are.
Scheduled speakers have five minutes.
Five minutes. So we are even cutting back that, that, that informational time when this is the only time they get to speak or speak to the board. You know, this is the only time that it's even recorded, you know? So I don't think that we should, should, should take away that right from our constituents. They have that right to speak. They have that right to be heard and we should listen. Thank you.
And I'm just going back to the January 2023. And Mrs. Richardson, your, your comments were almost identical to the comments you made in January of 2023. And just to summarize, you know, when we, when we reviewed that, that, you know, you would express some concerns and, and Dr. Mills did express some concerns. But, but ultimately, this is where, based on, you know, re-watching that, this is where we landed. Or at least this was my interpretation of what potentially the majority of the board wanted to go to. And this will be my recommendation.
I, I also thought, and I, I can't remember right, but also the, the timing of turning in the unscheduled speaker form, I thought we were going to change that too. Because it's.
As it is now, it's, they have to turn it in before the actual business meeting begins?
No, I think policy says before the consent agenda is voted on.
Well, that's the business meeting.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I, I thought you were talking about like as soon as it starts at five o'clock and we start presentations.
No, the, the business portion of the meeting, it has to be turned in before that. And I don't think we talked about any change to that because that gives them time after they're actually in here to decide if they.
Mr. Ingersoll, to your point, after reviewing, this was the, this was the only change.
Well, I would have liked to see it, you know, turned in before the meeting, total meeting started, so.
Maybe that could be the suggestion rather than the, giving everybody following this. 10 speakers, less than three minutes. I'm, I'm good with that part. And, but the, the, the other part, I'm not good with. I, I agree with Ms. Richardson in that everyone should get a chance to speak. For one, we don't have a lot of those type of meetings. We, because we do, I think, very well as a board in addressing the needs of the public overall. So we have very few of those meetings, very few, you know? So when we do have them, we do need, I think we do need to hear as a board, it's respect for the people that we give them that time that they need to speak. And if we did cut off, if we made it, okay, right now it's before the, the business meeting that we have, the cutoff. But if we had the cutoff from the beginning, I mean, people should be here when the meeting starts. And there shouldn't be a lot of, you know, back and forth and coming up and so forth. Once our meeting starts, I do agree with Mr. Ingersoll with that. Once our meeting does start, it starts. So I can see us saying, okay, cutoff time is, you got to get here. If you're going to speak, you need to get here before the meeting starts. You need to turn in the paperwork before the meeting starts. But the, the, the three minutes, we're already cutting the five minutes from scheduled speakers. So I think the public need to know that we're willing to listen to them when they do have concerns. And as I said, I don't even know if we had such a meeting within the last year. I know we, we had a public coming for comments with the books and with the COVID situation. Though that, those times are going to come. And we do need to hear and respect people by allowing them more than a minute. That's, that's kind of like, you know, in other words, don't say a word. So that's my stance on it.
Disagree with the, with having to sign up before the meeting starts only because things happen. You know, we are already at five o'clock when most people are leaving work. So we have to give them time to get here, at least if they want to speak, you know? At least give them some, 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 something, you know? So if they get here before the business part of the meeting, at least, you know, they, they still have that opportunity. Because not everybody can get here at five o'clock. So that would give them at least an incentive to even want to get here anyway. If they know that if they have, something is on their heart, they want to speak, they have that extra five, five minutes, you know? So I'm just.
Same, Mrs. Richardson, but I'll give an example of people coming at a certain time before, you know, by the time the, by the time the, the meeting starts. Just this past, I think, meeting that we had, a board meeting, we had a full house, full house. When people really want to be somewhere, they're going to be there. We had a full house standing only, and that's because the children. We had enough people that wanted to support the children, their children. So when people really, I mean, some folks have to work and they can't be here. I get that. I understand what you're saying. But just to, you know, I, I still stand on, on a, you know, you get to places on time. So I hear what you're saying though. I understand that and I get that. But I certainly do agree with what you were saying about the three minutes being taken down to two minutes, taken down to one minute. That's where I, my cutoff would be.
I mean, I, I prefer that we have, keep it at the five minutes, like we have it. You know, I don't see, you know, because, I mean, five minutes is five minutes. But three minutes, it's, but the one minute is, is totally, I believe, unacceptable. You know, what, what, what are you going to say in one minute? This is not a three-second elevator speech. You know, if there's something on your heart, it's something you want to say, something you need to get across. You know, we need to, we need to give our constituents time. This is why we are here, you know, to hear what's on their heart. And they don't normally come. So when they do come, you know, I want to hear what they have to say.
All right. I've got, okay, two things. One is, is this, this, this will be my recommendation to the board to be on the March agenda as submitted. I do want to make a point though, Mr. Ingersoll, you, you actually brought up something that in an, in an earlier rendition, we did have that. You are correct. And, and I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you why.
I know I said it.
The reason, the reason why is actually, it should have had its own slide because that is, that is a, a change because it's a security issue. Because in the past, we've had people trying to submit speaker forms during the meeting and people approach the dais. So that, that is another minor change that is in the policy update that we did not have a slide for. But Helen, you can fill them in on it.
That's correct, and I apologize for that. I want to add procedurally as well, what you see on, on this slide in front of you right now and this next slide, these two parts are in the proposed policies that you have. Those, this is what's already included in what's been publicly noticed. So this is what will go March 12th. It can be pulled for separate discussion on March 12th. But as Dr. Prince said, this is what has already been released to the public as our proposed policy. However, Mr. Kelly's addition was not. So this would actually be brought back on, at the April meeting at, as a minor addition if you wanted that to proceed. So just procedurally, I wanted to clarify, there are two different aspects of the procedure.
We are, the, the superintendent is asking that we adopt this as it stands right now without the suggestion.
This, this will go to the, this part will go to the board on March 12th for approval by the board. In addition to the, the speaker, if, if they're signing up to be a speaker, they have to have it in by the time the meeting starts. Correct? And that's a safety issue because once everybody's there, we don't want people. Because the only way that one of those speaker forms can get up front is if somebody walks up there. And what we've had in the past is people just fill them out and try to approach the dais. We want to, and there will be clear signage that once the meeting starts, all the forms have to be turned in. And then we take the forms and then we have a security person bring the forms over to Ms. Lincoln. And then we, they pass those down to the chair.
Is that meeting or business meeting?
That's actually the.
That was the question.
Meeting prior to the start of the meeting. For safety because that's what came out of the last.
Five o'clock.
So that's the proposed, that's what you're proposing.
That's the proposal. And along with this, we'll go to the March, March 12th board meeting. The other, the more explicit language, because it's not currently, right? These, what I'm sharing with you right now is already in the documents that you have been provided.
Right.
This one change, this one change that Mr. Kelly and I do concur, and it would be my recommendation to add this language, because it's not publicly noticed and it, it's not the way it currently is in your review packet. If we made this change, this would not come before the board until April.
That's my question. And yes, you answered my.
Okay.
So this is not going to be in a package. We are, you, the only thing that we are approving or giving a direction on is everything else but this.
Correct, correct. And there's two other things with regards to weapons that we still have to get through in this meeting.
The entire policy book that has been publicly noticed because it requires 30 days, that is what you're voting on March 12th. And this slide here is not what was advertised. This is, this came about as a result of people looking at the policies and Mr. Kelly seeing something that he thought needed to be added.
So this is going to be added next year?
Next month. April. It would come as a policy change for April.
So anything in this policy can be changed?
Always in board policies, the entire book can go through a policy revision. And when it does, it's, the change, the recommended change is, has to be advertised for 30 days before it's brought for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of things briefly. This part right here, as Dr. Mills already pointed out, is something that we already do and it is part of Robert's Rules of Order. You, you, I agree with you on that. And it does have to come in a separate time. But it's something that we already do. But it, it can't be on the, he's right, it can't be on the next meeting. We'd have to do that separate, right? Absolutely separate. The, the second thing I want to talk about is the, when we did this, we talked about the one minute. If you could put that back with the one minute after 21 people. Okay, isn't this something that, that we looked at other boards in the state? Or not the state, maybe even further, but I think it was a state that 75 or 80% of the boards do this exact one.
Yeah, we, we did look at other, many other districts. And, and this is, you know, we landed on this, but we actually had a, a few different iterations that we shared with the board. And then after we discussed a few, this is kind of where we landed with, with board members. And after, once again, Mr. Kelly re-watching it, this, this is what's going to be the recommendation.
And just going back to, you know, I feel this is absolutely for the public, this is absolutely more friendly to the public and more people get to speak. And if you go down to the one minute, 21 minutes, and I hear you're, what you're saying. But, you know, being 100 years old and being through this, and like you say, we don't, the time that I've been here, we never had a meeting like on the city council across town Parkway. We went to three o'clock in the morning and came back in the morning and went all day again. And if we had done five minutes, we would have been there three days, not four. And things that happened during the meeting, you get to about one o'clock in the morning and somebody's up there speaking for three minutes. And it's the, you know, the 51st speaker, you get people and they, they start to boo people. It gets out of hand. And the reason that this is friendly not only to the public, it's friendly to the chairman that's running the meeting. And it's actually more important for that person that's running the meeting or the vice chairman or whatever because they, they have some, something to go by. They've got lawful thing. The one minute for over 21 people, absolutely, I agree with 100%. I've been through it, I say 100 years old. I've only been through it three or four times. But when it happens, you're going to be very sorry that you didn't adopt this plan. And it's adopted, and if it's adopted by 80 or 90% of the other boards, then it would be the right way to go. But you only have to go through this three o'clock in the morning. But you only have to go through this three o'clock in the morning, next day thing, maybe once or twice every 10 years, I don't know. But when it does happen, it's important, and it's important that the chairman has that. Another thing is that, uh, on the city council, and I, I think, I'm not sure about the commission, at one time, they did have five minutes even before I got there 20 years ago, and they did the public to be heard at the end of the meeting. And when I got elected, I wanted it at the beginning of the meeting because it's, how can I vote on something that's going to be in a meeting if I don't hear from the public first? And that was so contentious, it took three meetings, and I got beat up a lot before we put it to the beginning of the meeting, and it's always been that way. However, on the city council, and I hate to keep bringing it up, but I have to because it, it, it goes to this, on the city council, they don't use Robert's Rules of Order, they use Rule of the Chair. So if the chair has 100 people out there, Ms. Holly, and, and they don't have to sign up either, they have 100 people that want to speak, uh, and she sees that and asks to raise her hand, how many want to speak, she can automatically just say, I'm going to give you 30 seconds, or I'm going to give you one minute. And we don't do that here, and I agree, I would rather have this, that's why I voted up and make it clear, because the chairman needs to have that, they, they have to have the guidelines to go with. This is much more, oh, that's bad English. This is more friendly to the public, uh, than any other thing that I have seen, and I, and I agree with 100%. And, uh, if you've been through it, you would agree with it too, but I, I respect your views, but I like this idea, and I like that it's written out, and we do use Robert's Rules of Order.
Mr. Kelly, in 14 years of being a board member here, 14 years, we have never had a contentious meeting like that. And it, we have rules in place that have worked. So why change things when things have been working unless it's for the betterment? I don't agree that this policy is for the betterment of the people. If we, if I have to sit till three o'clock in the morning, listening to people, and I hardly ever do it at all, I'm going to be patient and I'm going to sit because people have the right to be able to say what they're going to say. And so already, we're cutting it down to three minutes, which we've, you know, I've been here 14 years, and we're just cutting it down to three minutes. And we did not have that out of control meeting in my experience. People simply said what they had to say. We do have in place that no board members really comment to respond to the people, and that has worked, that has worked beautifully, that we don't respond to the comments. What we've done all these years is that, if, after a person make their comments, the, the superintendent many times will go down and talk to the people, or even before that, uh, you know, you, people coming with complaints. What's worked for us is that the superintendent or one of his staff will go and talk to the person first, and many times, that person changes their mind and doesn't even speak because the problem is being solved before it gets to that point. So based on how we have always done this all the time I've been here, that has been very workable, I think that myself, this is my thoughts, that it isn't real insult to the community to do it this way. Uh, it's worked in the past, and if I have to sit through in COVID time, if I had to sit through 24 hours, I would have sat right there to listen to the people. So I have got to definitely, um, look at it in a different manner.
I totally respect and understand what you're saying, but I don't think you understand what I'm saying to you. We stayed to three o'clock in the morning, and you haven't had that happen in 14 years, and I hope it doesn't happen for another 14, which makes this even less important because if it doesn't happen, then you don't have to worry about the one minute. But it did happen, I'm an Eagle Boy Scout, be prepared, that's all I'm telling you. I will sit to three o'clock in the morning and I'll come back the next day, I'm talking about the people out there, the crowd, I do not have control of that. When they start booing people, and it happened, they start, and they get contentious, and they start pushing each other around outside, and it's on the, the six o'clock news the next day, that's the crowd, I don't have that control. They, they don't have the respect, the crowd, like you do, or you do, or we do, we are elected to stay here to three o'clock in the morning, but they are not. And I don't want it out of control, and I want the cheerperson to be able to run that, and I don't want that problem. If it's never happened, then this is even less important. But, uh, more people speak, I think that's more democratic, and it's good that we have a difference of opinion, but I'm coming from the control of the crowd, and when you see that, when it ever does happen someday, I'm sure you'll understand exactly where I'm coming from here, but it's not that important, and, and I hope it never happens again. I under, Donna, I can't argue with you.
Yeah, and, and what, and what you're saying, three minutes per person is sufficient for me, that's the, that's the difference in our, um, conversation.
Board members, as mentioned before, and, and we can keep going, but I think everybody's kind of said what they can say today, and it's not an action item today, but as the superintendent said, it'll be coming before us, um, the first two on March the 12th for our vote, and then the additional comment will be coming at the April meeting. So unless you're opposed, um, to, anybody else need to, anything else to add to the conversation?
In terms of the placards, the, um, you can have the cards, but not on a stick? Or you just can't have the cards at all?
Are you talking about signage?
The signage, yes.
Requires permission.
Need permission to have signage.
Okay, so no signs, period?
No, no signs.
And how long do you need to have to get the permission? Is there a, a time to get a permission to have the, the, the signage? Is there, is there?
It simply says, uh, if approved in advance by the superintendent or designee.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Wild, if you want to move on into the next portion?
The last two policies, um, if you have taken some time to go through Neola, you see that many of the policies are duplicated in different sections for different people. Um, so the next one is really just one, but it's two different policies, one for adults and one for students. And the change in this one, it, you might recall that we did have a case where an employee had a visible weapon in the front of the car on a school campus, um, that was accessible to students. And, uh, when that went to a hearing, the judge pointed out that there is a, a point of law that requires school districts to explicitly waive a portion of the law. And if you waive that, it makes it very clear that, that employee would not have been permitted to have that gun in that way in their car. So, uh, our, um, policy that we've put out here in this public notice would have made that case where we would have won that particular case, um, and we feel kept our students safe and, and make sure that in the future, there is no ambiguity around that. And so the two policies are 7217, and this one applies to adults on campus, and 5772, which applies to students. So I'd like to, they are identical, except for the second one applies to students. I'd like to ask you all to, um, refer to the screen and read this policy, um, prior to having any discussion. So our previous policy said guns were not allowed on campus, however, there's a statute that allows them in cars. And so for that policy to have extended to that staff member, we needed to put what is, what is in bold on that slide, that we as a school district are waiving that exception for cars so that it's clear that visitors and staff members may not have a gun accessible in their car. And then in the other policy, it's students. So that's, that is just one that we wanted to make sure that, that you all were aware of and had discussion about because we did not previously have that waiver in our policy. Sorry, it, this, this slide here, 5772, this one here is the same policy for students. Yeah, I just switched slides, yes.
Dr. Wild, under, under this waiver, are we required, required to have signage on the gates or anything leading into the school, so if a visitor's coming on a campus and might have, you know, permission to carry, is there a?
I believe the answer to that is yes, and, and once the board adopts this, we would work on, on that effort. I'm being told that is correct.
We already have signage on our buildings, this is one of those, uh, odd cases, and I'll give you an example. I've got a firearm, and, um, I pull up in a school and it's in the front seat of my car, and what basically the judge said was, you locked your door, uh, so I'm a student, if I walk by, I can't get to the gun. Well, I can knock a window out and get to it. I mean, there, you should not, under no circumstance should that ever happen on a school property. And this was actually one of our employees, which should never happen. So the bottom line is, they don't belong on our campuses, they don't belong in our school, the only people I want carrying firearms in our, our buildings are our school resource deputies or our security, uh, staff. So this was a loophole in the law that I wanted to make sure we tied up, and to your point, Ms. Holly, we'll make sure that we communicate this clearly and that we have adequate signage on our buildings.
Any comments from board members? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Wild.
Yep, before we close, once again, I just ask our, um, our board members, remember to bring your card on March 12th, uh, because big decision to make with the name of the new high school on February 29th, I think that's Friday, the walls go up for one of our buildings at the new high school, and we'll be making sure that we get, uh, some video of that moving forward. So hopefully at our next board workshop, you can see that new building coming together, possibly Mr. Smith with some signage of the new name of the high school. And that, that concludes everything we have.
All right, anything else to come before us?
I do have a question. Um, the gentleman that spoke from the Youth Advisory Committee brought up some points. Are we ever going to cover those points?
Can you be a little more specific for me?
Um, he talked about going to football games and, and, uh, purchasing.
Oh, yeah, that's already in the works, Ms. Albritton has taken care of that.
And then the other one was, uh, volunteer services through Skyward.
Yes, she's working on that, and with Mr. O'Leary.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, seeing no business, we are adjourned. Thank you.